Starting here when the light is on, folks. So, good evening, everyone, on this very warm early summer evening we're having. What we have is our council meeting will start immediately after we have our ARA meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councillor Kellum, and he will open up the ARA meeting.
Okay, Mary, could I have a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson. Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kenopa.
Here. Thank you. Scheduled business, first thing we have is a public hearing. It is the public hearing for this reason. And I would open the public hearing at 7:16. And we have a staff report, wherever our staff report person is. There it is.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillors, ARA Board. I don't have anything in particular to share with you this evening beyond the budget message we've already spoken about a few weeks ago, but stand ready to answer any questions that you might have regarding the budget, if there are any right now.
Okay, well, we don't have, and we do not have anybody listed to testify one way or the other, either for or against or negative?
May I make a few comments, sir?
Go for it.
I'll just point out that Bolt, Carlisle, and Smith, which are CPA firm, were engaged to review our first biennial budget. And they expected the Budget Committee's approved budget for compliance with local budget law contained in ORS and for computational errors. No material issues were noted. But with respect to CARA, they did note that transfers to and from CARA should not be classified as transfers but as revenues and special payments. This is a change from past practice, but the auditors considered it appropriate to recommend the change. The ARA appropriations resolution has been updated to reflect that change.
I presume that that is because while we look like the City Council, we're not really the City Council in this regard.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the ARA Board to Seth?
I have no questions.
There is a resolution.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
I will, in just a second here. Are you ready to close the hearing and go to the resolution? Okay, with that, the hearing is closed at 7:17. And there is the resolution on the dais. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the or adopt the budget. Yes, President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next meeting date is, well, next Wednesday after CARA. And with that, unless there is something else from the Board, we are adjourned.
Okay, all right. And Mary, you ready to start on the council meeting? Okay, thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call Rold because this is a new and separate meeting.
All right, we'll do the pledge allegiance first, okay? So I will call the meeting to order on this is our City Council meeting, and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance, you apply?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Mary.
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
You.
Bessie Johnson. Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kenopa.
Here. Okay, and Peter, you wanted to...
Yes, I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce the newest member of the city staff. And in the back room, you see a lot of Parks Department people. And over on the south side of the room is Ms. Kim Ledain. And Kim will be our new Parks and Recreation Director. And Ed Hodney will be our old Parks and Recreation.
And he is applauding the loudest.
Well, welcome, Kim. And you are going to really enjoy working for our city. And we are going to greatly miss Ed Hodney. So, he has just been wonderful for our Parks and Rec Department and programs. And we're just going to make sure that he stays active too in our community. But, yeah, so, great, thank you. Okay, next would be on underscheduled business is communication. And this is accepting Julie Jackson's resignation from the Transit Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. We do, if you're looking at this agenda, you're seeing that we've got two and a half pages and a lot of public hearings. A lot of, some of this is kind of some routine business, so it shouldn't take too long to get through it. It just, it's sometimes unknown. We don't know how much conversation that we'll be having with each item. So bear with us, folks. But, okay, first public hearing is number one, and I'm going to open that up at 7:21 PM. And this is the opportunity to comment on proposed uses of state revenue sharing. So Gina, did you have any comments on this?
So, let's do that. So as we wrote in the staff memo, right now that money has been designated to go to transit. We expect to receive $625,000 in the first fiscal year. And we just have to approve the resolution saying that we're eligible to receive state shared revenues and then also to accept state shared revenues. So there's two different resolutions on the dais for you.
All right, thank you, Gina. Okay, Counsel, so you do have, your first one is on page, resolution is on page six.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All right. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the second one is declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. This is a resolution on page seven.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Mary, do you open and close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, I opened it and I did not close it. I messed up on that one. So we, we're going to close it at 7:22 PM since we just did our motions. So, thank you, thank you, Mary, for catching that. Okay, now we have another public hearing. This is item two. This is adopting the 2020-2024 Capital Improvement Program. And at 7:23 PM, I'll open up this public hearing. And I'm presuming we have a staff report.
We do, just a real brief one for you. For those in the audience, the Capital Improvement Program, it's a five-year planning document for infrastructure. And the first two years, now that are identified in that plan, feed into our budget. It's a long process that we start early in the year. The Council Budget Committee and Planning Commission did their first joint review back in April. We incorporated the modifications that were requested at that time. And we had the CIP out for public comment for around a month. It was available at both of the libraries, on the city's website, and at the Public Works counter. We received no public comments this year.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
Okay, questions? All right, is there any, there was nobody that signed up on the list to speak under the Capital Improvement Program, but was there anyone here that forgot to sign up and would like to speak on the Capital Improvement Program? Not seen anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:25 PM. And Counsel, you have a resolution on page nine.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Is that a second?
Affirmative.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now we are on item three, and this is over our Community Development Block Grant 2019 Action Plan. And at 7:25 PM, I will open up that public hearing. And Anne.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councillors. I'm Anne Catlin with the Community Development Department. I want to just cover what's before you tonight. The city is what we call a federal entitlement city. And back in 2013, when we crossed 50,000 population threshold, we became eligible to receive a formula grant from Department of Housing and Urban Development. And those funds are what constitute the Community Development Block Grant Program. Tonight, we are asking you to approve a plan for how we will spend funds that we will receive for the 2019 program year, our fiscal year 2019-20, or 2020-21. The city also prepares a five-year plan. We're in our second year, we will be beginning our second year of a five-year plan. And each annual plan outlines what goals we'll address in that five-year strategic As you probably know, affordable housing is still a very important issue, and there's a lot of need around that. And the goal in the plan is to increase the supply of affordable housing as well as preserve the existing affordable housing stock that we have. And we'll be doing that through housing rehabilitation, no interest loans to owner-occupied single-family residences. And then there is some homebuyer down payment assistance funds. Willamette Neighborhood Services manages both programs. And then Lynn Benton Housing Authority has a little bit of carryover funding for the homebuyer down payment assistance program. We also are setting aside as much remaining unallocated funds for creating new affordable housing. And that could be in the form of property acquisition or improving property partnerships with agencies. And we'll be working on figuring out that over the next couple of months. A primary goal of the federal government and of these resources is also to address our homelessness situation, to ideally reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness in Albany. There are three shelters that help these residents. And public services grants will be going to each of those shelters for different programs, primarily for shelter operations, case management, and to help residents gain employment or further their education, those kinds of things. Public services are greatly needed in our areas, and we have a lot of people that are extremely low-income and living at poverty level. And some of these programs up here, Family Tree Relief Nursery will receive a grant to prevent child abuse through a program that they go into the home and work with parents that are at high risk of child abuse. And it prevents foster care placements, and saves a lot of money in the system down the road. Then money goes to Furniture Share to provide furniture, beds, dining room tables, and healthy food boxes with real vegetables in them, by part. And the Senior Companion Program that Cascades West Council Government operates will receive a small amount of money, and that program helps seniors stay, homebound seniors stay in their homes. These funds are also used to provide economic opportunities to Albany's low and moderate income residents. And I forgot to say that these funds are primarily intended for Albany's low and moderate income residents. That's one of the goals of the federal program. The city has a very small grant program for new businesses to help them offset costs to get their business underway so that they can grow enough to add jobs. And then the city provides a small amount of money to Lynn Benton Community College so they can offer courses to low and moderate income residents for free business courses and going into business kinds of courses. And then a lot of the funds have been used to help remove blighting influences around the community and increase accessibility, such as safe routes to school and adding curb ramps and infill sidewalks. We don't have any new money proposed for this, but there are still some carryover funds. And we've been working on Sunrise Park, which is behind Sunrise Elementary School. There's a picture up there, but there's still a little work to do on that park. We need to continue a path and some lighting. And these are just a sense of what kind of residents we're serving. As I mentioned, these funds are for low and moderate income residents. However, most of the people that are being served by these funds are earning below 30% of the area median income, so they're very low-income residents. And then the ethnicity of residents served, these are last year's numbers, pretty much reflects our demographics, which is good. Our goal is to make sure we're reaching all of our residents. Just in the first six months, these funds have served almost 1,200 people, so these few dollars are doing quite a bit in our community. So that's the first resolution, which is item 3A. The second, 3B, is a proposal to move unallocated funds from accessibility improvements over to affordable housing so that we can provide as much money as possible to further affordable housing. But I want to have you wait on taking any action on that. We're going to ask you not to take action on that resolution because we've gotten some more information on our Sunrise Park project that I said we still need to work on, and we may need to keep some of those funds for accessibility improvements because our early estimates are coming in a lot higher than what we have budgeted. So if you can wait on that, and then just look at item 3C. The city is required to have a citizen participation plan adopted, and we do have one, but we need to make a few minor amendments to it. It's essentially the same plan that encourages citizen participation, which includes holding this public hearing. We had a 30-day comment period on these documents. We meet with agencies and do surveys. But there are a few things that we wanted to clarify and update in the plan. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of Anne?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at, I'm not sure what page I'm on. Let me look at page 21. So I'm looking at page 22, and it shows, it's called the Program Administration and Fair Housing Planning section. There's $76,000 set aside for that. There's another $20,000 for opportunities, $18,000 for micro opportunities, and another $20,000 for increased economic opportunity for low-income residents, and another just above that. Then we get to the Senior Companion Program. There's only $2,500 set aside. Is that mistyped, or is that just $2,500?
They only asked for $4,000. So they didn't explain that public services funds are limited to 15% of our total award. And our total allocation this coming up year is $380,000. So 15% of that is about $57,000. They applied for, I think, $4,000 or $4,500. And all of the public service agencies are getting only a percentage of what they ask for. We couldn't actually give them more money because they're restricted funds. But they don't need very much money, and they've already been willing to accept just $2,500.
Okay, other questions?
Hold on. Alex, satisfied with the answer? Looks like you're still amusing about it.
Was that it, Alex?
It was fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you. And there was two people that did sign up to speak on, for this public hearing over the City's Community Development Block Grant. So first one is Stacy. And then Stacy, you know how to spell your last name and furnish your address.
My name is Stacy Bartholomew, B-A-R-T-H-O-L-O-M-E-W, 966 Bryce Court, Albany, Oregon. I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity. I sit on the Board of Habitat for Humanity here in Albany. And we have been the recipients of CDBG funding for our most recent renovation. And with those funds, we were able to support Elizabeth and her daughter Emily in getting into a house here. It would not have been possible to get this house without the help of the CDBG funds because the people who were living there, we had the first right of refusal. And by so doing, we had to pay, you know, market rate. And the CDBG funds helped to supplement that for us so that we could continue to go forward in the rest of our buildings this year and not only provide one house for needy family, but two houses this year. So that is our, it's helping us to do that, and we really appreciate that. And so we're in favor of that as well. I have another hat, and that is as president of the Creating Housing Coalition. And we are a group who is desiring to increase the variability in our affordable housing and bring a tiny house village to Albany. And so the possibility that this kind of funding would be helpful to us in that endeavor is also something that I'm here to represent and to give my vote in favor of this funding. I look forward to the resolutions. I'm very glad that Mr. Johnson, that you brought that up because I, as I was reading through, I was like, $2,500 for the seniors? Not low.
Those are my people.
It's my folks, too. And as I read further, I was interested to find out, you know, how that program could be expanded, so, for them. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing. And I'm looking forward to this CDBG grants being allocated and more to affordable housing. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Next was Brigetta Olson.
My name is Brigetta Olson. I'm the COO of Willamette Neighborhood Housing Services. We are a community development corporation. We've been around for over 28 years. And our mission is to help develop, create affordable housing, economic opportunity, economic opportunity and community partnerships. We recently merged with another strong, healthy organization called NedCo, and we will have a new name in the future. But we are going to have better and greater impact because of this merger. We are recipients of CDBG dollars and really appreciate one-year service and city staff to help us deploy these important resources to low-income homeowners in Albany. So we've been able to operate the Albany Home Repair Program, which helps existing homeowners repair their existing home and make sure it's healthy and safe for them to either age in place or actually access to capital that they might not otherwise have been able to get through a financial institution. Many of the households that we serve through that program are seniors on fixed incomes who are homeowners who want to gracefully age in place and at the same time don't have the capital that's needed to do so. We also have been fortunate to receive down payment assistance funds. So in Lynn County last year, the average purchase price was around $250,000. That is so out of reach for so many low-income Oregonians. And having down payment assistance as an extra tool to help folks get into homeownership is critical. So thank you. Really appreciate having these federal dollars and working in partnership with the city of Albany.
All right, thank you, Brigetta. Okay, that was it, that signed up on the list. Was there anyone else that wanted to comment on the Community Development Block Grant Plan? Okay, all right. With that, at 7:39 PM, I will close the public hearing. Anne, did you have anything else that you needed to add? Okay, Counsel, you do, will only be taking action on A and C. A is on a resolution on page 12.
Way ahead, okay.
What would you like to do with this item, or did you have more questions?
Let me take a look at it real quick. Move for adoption of the resolution on page 12.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Anne, we will skip B, and we'll bring that back to us. So now we have C, and that is a resolution on page 53. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Read it first, can we see?
Or do you have questions?
I would like to read it first, give me a second, read over it.
Okay. It's a lot of pages.
I read it twice already, but this is like a big document. Let me see. I'm making motion to adopt the resolution as it is.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in a second. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, that's it, all right. Thank you, Anne. All right, oops, we are on the back page, and this is on item number four, and this is adjusting the system development charges, SDCs and connection charges. This starts on page 60. And I will open the public hearing at 7:41 PM. And Steph, have a report. Yes, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. So every year, Public Works connection fees and utility fees are adjusted for inflation. And the index that we use is the Seattle Construction Cost Index, based, as represented from the Engineering News Record. So we came to council work session a few weeks ago and went over the proposed inflationary increases for the connection fees, the system development charge, and the post-construction stormwater connections or utility fee. Recommendation we got from council was to come back for a public hearing for consideration of adopting those inflationary increases. So quickly, I'm not going to go over everything that we covered in the work session, but quickly, for the record and for any of the audience who may want to give testimony, is for the connection charges, we are recommending a partial year inflationary adjustment. Those were increased this last year. And we are recommending a partial year inflationary increase, so that equals 4.26% for the connection charges. For the SDCs, if you remember, for water and for wastewater, we increased those fees this budget year, and we are not recommending an inflationary increase for the water and wastewater SDC. We'll leave those as they are this budget year. So that leaves a transportation SDC. We are recommending a full year of inflationary adjustment for the transportation. That's 4.71%. And the same with the post-construction stormwater quality fee. That has not been adjusted this budget year, so we are recommending a full year of inflationary adjustment for that. And that's also 4.71%. And that is it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, because this hearing will be over all of A through F, so anything else on any of those items?
No.
Okay, any questions to Rob? Okay, all right, thank you. So nobody did sign up to want to comment on the, this public hearing, which is the system development charges. This would be for A through F. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on these, on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing at 7:44 PM. Counsel, you're going to have a lot of resolutions here to pass. So, first one starts on page 65 unless you would like to take all of them at once or if you'd like to do them separately.
I think counsel said we should do them separately in the past. I could be wrong. That was a different counsel.
Would you like to?
Would you like to? Any complaints about any of them?
Are there any ordinances in here? Are they all resolutions?
They're all resolutions.
And they're all about development kind of resolutions, aren't they? So, I think we could, we love.
They're all inflation.
We've been over these several times already with them, so.
I have no trouble doing them all at once unless someone has a complaint about any one of them.
Yeah. We didn't get any comments from the public.
All right.
Yeah. I have no complaint.
Counsel's okay.
I would move, I would move we accept all of them.
Move that. You want to approve all resolutions. That would be page 65, 64, 75, 76, 78, 79.
Right.
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made and there's a second. Now, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Mary, I forgot to ask you, did you get all that? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next will be another public hearing. This is item five. This is setting fees and charges for development code provisions and repealing resolution number 6710. This starts counsel on page 81. I'll open the public hearing at 7:46 PM. And staff, have any comments? Yep, David?
I'm actually going to start off here, Mayor. Just another short presentation came to you and spoke to this, I think it was two work sessions ago, but what's on the table tonight for consideration in this public hearing is a inflationary adjustment to our planning fees and there's two potential options for you to consider tonight. One is a 1.93% increase, which is tied to the CPIW. That is consistent with your past practice for considering inflationary adjustments. Then there is a second option of 7.58%. That's calculated based on our anticipated increase in cost to process these types of applications. So, when we spoke last, the decision was, or the direction was to bring both of these forward to the public hearing, see what public testimony we might receive. Also wanted to note that, I believe I had, I had mentioned at that meeting that the last time an evaluation was done of the planning fees, that it was determined that the fees that were being collected were covering the costs of reviewing those applications. And David and I have spoke about that a little bit further. Neither of us were involved in the details of that evaluation and we'd like to go back and, and do that ourselves, check the numbers ourselves and we'll report back to you on what we find there on that. So, regardless of what action you take tonight on this, we'll come back and report back at a future meeting about how we're doing for cost recovery overall.
Okay. Questions?
So, we do, do we need to act on this scenario?
Please. Please.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, staff?
I do.
Count Rich?
Maybe I'm just being old and confused. You're talking about 7% or 1 point something percent, the 7% being what our actual costs would be. And then, a few moments later, you said you don't know what those costs would be.
No, the 7, the 7 point, that's a, that's a good question. Let's make sure I, I answer it clear. So, the 7.58% increase, it would be the year-to-year increase in staff's costs.
Okay.
To process those applications.
Okay. The other is what it would be an increase in the fee structure.
Regardless of whether we're covering our costs today, our cost to process applications are going up 7.58%.
That makes more sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right.
Go for it, Mike. Mike's got a question.
Yeah. So, the 7.58 includes a 1.9?
No.
In lieu of?
It's in lieu of.
So, it includes that.
You could look at it that way.
All right.
Yeah.
David? Do you have any?
No, I think Jeff did a great job.
Any, any additional, it'd just be an obfuscation in process.
That's right. Don't let me stand in the way.
And I agree with whatever he said.
Okay. So, the public hearing is open. There wasn't anyone that signed up. Is there anybody that would like to comment on the development code provisions, setting the fees? Okay. Seeing no one. With that, at 7:53 PM, we'll close the public hearing. And counsel, there is a resolution on page 85.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Which, which one is that?
Which option? That's the question.
Ah, that's the 7.58. According to this, I mean, 85.
Page 85.
Yeah. It's the 7.58.
So, you'd want to make a decision on which, which fee increase you'd like to go with, one or the other, basically.
I guess if it is actually just an increase in cost, I don't have a problem with it. And where I, we're not trying to make a fund to go up. We're just trying to recover what our cost is, so I would go along with that.
It's option two then.
The 7.58.
7.58.
Yeah.
And so, the maker of the motion, that includes the 7.58. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other question, any other comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did it receive a second?
Did it receive a second?
Second. I second it.
Okay. All right.
Received a third.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Now, we're on item number six and this is adjusting the utility rates for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. And that must be Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm not going to go over the full memo. We've provided this presentation to the council back in January, but as discussed here, the public, this public hearing is to consider rate increases for the three water utilities that will be effective next fiscal year, fiscal year 1920. Although there's a resolution for each of the three utilities you'll vote on tonight, those rates will be effective at their traditional times, which is July 1st, 2019 for wastewater, January 1st, 2020 for drinking water and March 1st, 2020 for stormwater. Even though the city is moving to the biennial budget, Public Works is going to continue to evaluate and perform these rate forecasts annually. The next discussion on these three rates is anticipated to take place in January of 2020 where we will review our revenues expenditures and provide an update to the five-year forecast for each of the three utilities. If anyone in the public would like more detail on how these rates were developed, I'll refer them to the attachment memo that's in the packet or the January 28th work session audio that's available on the city's website where we gave the full presentation. So, the rate recommendations discussed with counsel that are in the packet tonight are 3.5% increase for wastewater, 5% increase for water and 17% increase for stormwater. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
For the public's information, that 17% sounds like a lot. What does that really mean in an average, average home?
Well, I'm going to have to look it up. It's, it's about a, I think it's.
$1.27.
I'm going to say a $1.27. So, the reason that it, that percentage is.
And three mils.
Seems high is because it's a percentage of a fund that's very small. So, the stormwater fund was started with a very low rate at council's direction and so 17% of a small number sounds big, but it doesn't work out to very much per residential customer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it does look like a $1.17.
Oh, my God!
I was close.
You were, you were off.
Well, for the first tier, yeah. Okay. I'm going to open up the public hearing at 7:53 PM and we did not have anybody that want, signed up to comment on the utility rate increases. Is there anybody that would like to comment on them this evening? Okay. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at, at 7:54 PM. And counsel, you have three resolutions. The first one would be over the wastewater system and that is a resolution on page 103.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. The next one is the rate increase for water and this one is resolution on page 112.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Your turn.
And then the third is over stormwater rates.
Move to approve.
Second.
On page, that's on page, resolution 116. Okay. Motion's been made and there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. And for folks that just thought, okay, we raised in rates, but we did go through quite a bit of meetings and as Chris had mentioned, all of that is on our city website, on YouTube and the presentations that were done during those meetings, over these rate increases. Okay. Now, we move on, starting on page 121. This is going to be adopting our 2019, 2021 biennium budget, our first biennium budget here for the city. And I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:56 PM. And who would like to lead off, staff? Gina or Peter?
Yeah, I think we have Counselor Johnson joining us as well.
Okay.
So, the budget before you for adoption tonight does contain service level reductions in every city department, but this budget is balanced. It's been approved by the budget committee and it avoids any further reductions in our reserve funds, in our general fund contingency.
It's Maryland.
It puts into practice the phrase, "living within our means."
Yes.
I have to thank the budget committee for their work in approving the budget and we've resolved the error that Sue Folden noted by applying $251,000 from contingency and the appropriation on the DAS reflects that correction. Their correction does not affect or impact any individual department. As a reminder, any changes that we consider tonight in, in any fund that are greater than 10% will require five days' notice and with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Okay. Staff or council have any questions before we take testimony? We only had one person sign up and, but if there is anybody else that wanted to speak, we, you'll have the opportunity. So, the first person is Vera Helvey. And if you can state your name and spell your last name and finish your address, please.
Hi, yes. My name is Vera Helvey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Last name is spelled H-E-L-V-E-Y and my address is 1425 Main Street Southeast, Albany, Oregon. I'm in here tonight to support the budget and encourage the mayor and the city council members to adopt the budget as is, especially in support of the program of Maple Lawn Preschool. I was one of the many parents in this community who benefited from this program. My daughter is now seven, but she went to both the regular preschool class and the ready set go program that they offer and benefited greatly from her participation in that program. A little background on me, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and I worked in children's mental health in the community here for approximately eight years, both in residential care and in the community through vocational and direct services. And the invaluable service that this, this particular program provides to preschool education for children, especially since they're one of the only programs that provide services for children with disabilities and the fact that it is a very good option for low-income families who are looking to prepare their children to enter into full-time school in the Albany School District now that we have kindergartners going to school all day. This is just a wonderful program. The teachers are all very, very wonderful with the kids and we, as the parents of this community, really appreciate that program and would love to see it continue. I have another one on the way and I would love to be able to have him participate in it and have it still alive and going. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment on our, the proposed budget? Yes, Bob?
Thank you, your honor and members of the council. I'm Bob Brown. I reside at 608 Northwest Alpine Meadow here in North Albany and it's nice to be here this evening and watch the board function. It's a pleasure. I would like to ask a question of the city manager with regard to the balances in the general fund and how he plans to handle the position freezes in all the, all the positions in the city because my understanding that for the next two years, every department will remain staffed at the same levels of their staff once this budget's approved. And I ask the question because obviously there's going to be people who leave the agency and how he proposes to refill those positions. And I'm interested in understanding that in relation to the general fund balance and how that balance is going to reflect up and down during the next two-year period. So, Mr. Torreson, can you share how you're going to deal with that?
It's correct that there is a hiring freeze, although that we've, we've called it a hiring chill because of the fact it's not, not the case that there won't be throughput. And as you point out, any organization that's 440 people large, there are people that are retiring or leaving or departing for some other reason. So, the process in place now is to have the city managers sign off on any proposed replacement of any position. And how that affects the, the, the general fund balance, I'm not sure. I understand exactly what you're saying and I'd invite Gina, if you understand it anymore or perhaps you could explain it, what you mean by that.
Well, I understand you have a policy that the general fund and all your operational funds are to maintain anywhere between 5% and 15% balance.
Well, 5 to 15% reserve. So, in the general fund, that's a contingency fund. So, what will happen tonight is I'll determine what, whether that will, what that level will be. So, hiring, replacing people in any of the departments won't affect the contingency fund unless, unless we decide tonight that we want to hire more people than, than we've proposed.
Okay. So, my understanding is the general fund is going to adjust up and down during this two-year period, but it will stay within whatever numbers that you established this evening. Is that correct?
That's, you've got to remember that the budget is a predictive, so it's not, not an actual numbers. So, that's the intent though, is to budget as accurately as possible, as accurately as we can predict.
Okay. So, can I weigh in on here too? So, one of the things is we can adopt the budget. If revenues come in higher than anticipated, we can go out and do a supplemental budget. So, if we need to make changes over the two-year period, we can do that. But, right now, with the numbers that we're predicting, these would be the numbers that we would need to be within.
Okay. So, you're suggesting that the 400 and some odd employees that you have will stay level during the next two years? That's what you're hoping to do?
Correct. Correct. That's correct.
Well, I'm here this evening to support the addition, the addition of one additional person in the library and, and some general fund monies for the purchase and acquisition of books. And I note with interest that the city has done surveys of the community to determine what the, what the feeling is of the community and I note with, with interest that the library comes in with very high ratings. There's nearly 300,000 visitors a year at your two libraries. There is well over 7,600 hours, volunteer hours at the library during an annual period. And I understand that we have about 25 positions in the library and now will be reduced to 24 positions. And based upon the community's support for the library, it seems to me that it would be appropriate to, to continue to allow the staffing at the 25 people level as opposed to the 24. Now, I recognize that the entire age. Now, I recognize that the entire agency is subject to this hiring chill, but the library is, relative to the entire budget, is a very small amount. And it seems to me that a small amount, that you could put that money into the acquisition of books, the amount would be determined by you and the council and the library director, and include the one additional staff member that has, the library has always had funded. So, that is what I came tonight to ask you, that the council requests adjusting their minimums in the general fund to allow the addition of the one position and some money for the books.
Thank you, sir. Let me correct something that I said. You asked if we're going to keep the number of people at the level it is. But there are some departments who, as they look ahead, are anticipating retirements in certain positions that would be frozen, so it actually will go down by a few positions. Those positions will be frozen, so the hope is that if we can find ways to remedy that budget situation that we're in, that we'll be able to actually unfreeze them, melt them.
Okay. Well, then, let me respond by asking you or the finance director, what is the contingency amount that's left in the general fund that the council wants to maintain in the event there's some serious issue, financial issue in the community? What is that number?
Sure. Gina, you want to?
The amount that we're budgeting for this biennium is 2.3 million, roughly.
2.3 million dollars is the contingency? Is that, that's in the 5% to 15% range?
It is, I'm not sure exactly, it's probably around the 5%, 6% range?
Don't do public math, I'll figure that out.
5% to 6% range, in just the general fund?
There is reserve funds, you know, like for, you know, equipment replacement, you know, there's some, you know, building type, reserve type funds, too. So, we do have some other reserve funds, but the actual general fund contingency, that is it, it's kind of low for as large as a city we are, but we just hopeful we don't have any unforeseen expenses coming forward. But, you know, I have seen over the years where we might have the hiring freeze, but as we try to be able to seek new revenue sources, then it'll be coming back to the council to adjust those staffing level numbers. But, right now, we're going to, we're looking at some new revenue sources, and once we can have that in place, that would really help out on, you know, bringing up those service levels.
Well, I hope that's the case, for sure.
I do, too.
Because I recognize that what we're really calling for in the library is a 4% reduction in staffing, and they're the ones that provide the services to a community that very strongly supports its library.
And I assure you that every department has had to go through that pain.
So, much worse than that.
And the number from that quick math is 5.3%?
5.3%.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, Lisa, I think I saw you come in. Did you want to speak?
I would love to.
Okay, great, thank you. If you can state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Harlan, H-A-R-L-A-N, and I live at 6205 Mesa Court. Miss Mayor, esteemed council members, I'm here tonight serving as a spokesperson for the Greater Albany School District, and as a parent, to talk to you about the interest of the district in having Maple Lawn Preschool remain open. So, as you know, last summer Albany was named one of the 25 worst cities by USA Today to raise children. Now, I happen to disagree, I'm in the process of raising two children here and have been for quite a while, and have found that in education, we actually need more preschool opportunities. One of the reasons we were named to that was because of our lack of preschool enrollment. We know that preschool opportunities in our area are few and far between, and it is our desire to actually increase that number to better serve our community, not to decrease them. So, current legislation, there is the Student Success Act, that is expected to infuse approximately a billion dollars per biennium to schools. In this fund, there's 20% that is specifically allocated to early learning. So, what that means is fully funding early intervention, early childhood special education programs, more preschool opportunities, more Head Start programs. We understand that as a district, it will take us partnering, honestly, with anyone who is willing to partner with us, because we, in this area, are kind of known as a preschool desert. And for us, it would be enormously helpful to allow us the time to be able to get those funds to support Maple Lawn. So, we have an interest in partnering with the city when those funds become available through that Student Success Act. I understand that it doesn't solve any problems for you right now, tonight, but I'd like to come with more solutions than just requests, and that being that we have funds specifically for preschool opportunities that we are expecting, that we would like to use to partner with the city. It's much easier for us to support an existing preschool than it is to create new ones, right? A program already exists, there's a space that already exists, there's staff that already exists. It's much more costly and time-consuming for us to create from something that doesn't exist. So, we will be in a better position to do that after this next school year. So, I just ask you to take that under consideration, to remain open to partnering with the district in the future. And I don't envy the position any of you are in, and I appreciate your service to our community, and I just ask you to consider the district's position on Maple Lawn.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very encouraging, so, thank you so much, Lisa, for your support. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the budget? So, yes?
Hi, my name is Jessica Nielsen, N-I-E-L-S-E-N. I'm at 1198 Northwest 22nd Street, and that's in North Albany. I'm not here today to talk about my position, I think you guys have all heard what I've had to say, and my fingers are crossed, and I'm hopeful and all that jazz. I'm here to speak on behalf of somebody who can't be here thanks to a loss in her family. She sent me a very, very long email, I'm going to struggle to paraphrase for you, so bear with me, it's, hopefully this is less painful for you than it is for me right now. It's unfortunate I'm not able to attend the city council meeting this evening to continue to support Maple Lawn Preschool. It saddens me that possibilities exist that information will once again be incorrect, and people may be making decisions based on inaccuracies. She goes on to give examples, she took the last city council meeting and broke down each comment and number, item by item, I'm going to shorten that for you. One thing that was mentioned is that there was a city council member that was saying six months was enough time to maintain Maple Lawn. Logically, parents are not going to enroll their kids in a program that's only open for six months, that creates a hardship for families, and kind of a weird situation for classrooms, too, that's an interesting thing to advocate for. Another point is that numbers were compared between preschools and daycares, that was happening during a time when public comments weren't allowed, and so she wanted to clarify that preschools and daycares, very, very different, they are funded differently, the costs are very different, and she communicated that in many, many paragraphs, I assure you. Many, many paragraphs. Thanks, guys. So, another comment she wanted to clarify is that a counselor said, quote, "This is gigantically discriminatory against every person who pays the entire bill when they go to the Montessori school, or they go to First United Methodist, or any of the other churches." Again, these are public preschools, like other public preschools, the bill at Maple Lawn is not being paid by the organization operating the school. Like other, like, excuse me, other public programs, families are paying the monthly tuition. We're not sure how any of this is gigantically discriminatory, we're not sure who is being accused of gigantically discriminatory, and I don't think a clarification is expected on that. She says, "In regards to the city not being part of education, as previously stated by the city council member, please read the current Parks and Recreation Catalog and explain how the city is not involved in education. There are classes advertised for young children, adults alike, there are sports classes, all kinds of further education, even field trips for those who are interested." Okay. She said she'd like to clarify a rumor she heard. It was shared that a city council member, while at a community barbecue event in his ward, shared with the husband of a special education teacher that, quote, "Those kids shouldn't be in school anyway." She says she can only hope that this is a reference, that this is not a reference to special needs children, and she can only hope that this particular rumor is not true. She says, "I believe the cuts to the city budget began because of a desire to build up reserve accounts in order to prepare for an impending recession the city planners predicting. Please correct me if I'm wrong, we have a $518,000 budget error that's being corrected. It's also my understanding this is a second error, the first being the layoff of six firefighters that ended with a, quote, 'oops,' and now only two firefighters are laid off. I truly believe some of you are trying very hard to solve the budget situation by looking at the best interests of the city, while others are possibly blinded by their own uninformed ideas. I would hope the education in the form of the existing community preschool program would be supported by our city counselor, especially in light of, counselor, excuse me, especially in light of the facts that support the importance of learning in early childhood education, and the fact that Albany, as we're all well aware of by now, is the 25th worst placed, or, you know." She says, she ends it with the sentence, "Does this fall on deaf ears?" And that's Vicki M. Jones. So, anyway, thank you for letting me relay that, that was the second time I read that, and thank you for, yeah, hang up with that.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Anyone else that wanted to comment on the budget? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. With that, then, I will close the public hearing at 8:17 PM. Counsel, you do have a resolution, that's on page 136, but there's also the extra copy that was handed out on the dais. Was there any changes in this one that's handed out?
Just housekeeping items.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
I do have a question, like, for Peter or Gina, either one. So, Peter, in your original budget message, you've talked about trying to increase the reserves from 5% to 6%? Is that correct?
Correct.
1%.
Yeah, from 5% to 6%, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the dollar amount of that 1% increase?
It was about $400,000, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and so, we've lost over half of that in the air?
To correct, yeah, to correct an error, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counsel, you have a resolution in front of you, any other questions? What would you like to do with this item?
So, will we adopt the resolution?
Second.
All right, motion's been made in a second, any discussion?
Lots. Let's get to it. To begin with, Maple Lawn, let's get this straight. I was the person who said that it was discriminatory, and the reason I did is because the amount of money that the people who bring their children to Maple Lawn, which I don't doubt is a very good place, is a very small fraction of the total that the city spends on it. It's like 101, 125, 175, might go to 200, when $700 is, after you pay for the lights and the heat and all the rest of it. We pay for that for people even, as I find out, even people outside the city who bring their children to Maple Lawn. So, people who don't pay taxes to Albany are being subsidized by people who do pay taxes to Albany. Now, we are, we are not the general fund of the state, we are not schools, you look at the Parks and Rec, they are designed to be zero, or as close to zero, outlay as possible, at least according to, that's what I'm remembering from staff. We're not department, we're not the Department of Human Services. Us subsidizing people if they are our own taxpayers, that's one thing, I don't like it, but it's understandable, but to pay for people from outside the city that do not pay taxes, I can't vote for that. Okay, second. We are doing away with police officer positions that while there is no one in them right now, the reason there isn't is because they can't find people, and now we don't have money for them. So, as you have people who are retiring, they won't be replaced, which means the number of people, police on the street, is spiraling down. Now, to a gentleman who wants to have more, more money for the library, in 1966, I wanted to build a cyclotron for my science fair project, and I couldn't get all of it done, I couldn't, I needed to find out all the relationships between voltage and amperage and AC current and DC current, et cetera, et cetera. It was not available in my local library. I went to my school, I went to Marshfield High School, which is across, across town from North Bend, to Schwach, nowhere could I find it, finally ended up at Oregon State. Oregon State, the Kerr Library, found the information. It was a two-and-a-half-month excursion to do that. Three weeks ago, maybe it was four weeks now, I did that same thing with my cellphone. Two minutes. I had the place that I could get all that information. Now, I didn't download it all in two minutes, but I had where it was in two minutes, which says libraries are a different place than they used to be. No longer a place just for books, now it's a place for all kinds of stuff, transfer of information. So, I mean, we need to, with children in first, second, third grades, using notepads or using iPads instead of books, look down the road 10 years, that's what we're going to be looking at a lot of places. And we want to be ready for that in 10 years, not have buggy whips, you know, when we're, when we're ready to, everybody's using an iPad, and we still have a whole lot of books, we ought to be thinking more electronic. I don't see that happening. I can't support a budget that supports people outside the city and makes people inside the city lose their job because of it, or not have protection because of it.
Your lack of understanding.
Excuse me. We have some jobs that are important and other jobs that are not so important. I mean, if you look at what it is, we want to, first, let's not have anybody die. Don't die in a, somebody shooting at you, don't die in a fire, don't die because you have bad water, or you don't have adequate sewer, those are the things, yeah, that's the number-one thing. You can't, you can't scrimp on that as much as, you know, people would like to. But, bottom line, that's where we're cutting a lot of money. When you look at the list, Public Works, you look at overall, there's one from Public Works, three from police, three from Parks and Rec, one from fire, that's the second year, a total altogether for the two years, 13. We have responsibility. I can't support this the way it is.
Okay, any other comments?
So, I understand, Peter, we're not terminating anyone from fire or police.
Well, from fire police, that's correct.
Not terminating anyone.
We are from parks.
We are from parks, which is unfortunate for anybody being laid off, I've had to do that before. My question is, is it, would it be prudent for us to hire people in police for those three or four spots, and then get to a point next year, and then lay those people off?
No.
It would make sense, right? So, I support this as it is, because I've had to do that before. I've hired engineers from different states, I've hired engineers and project managers from Washington, Boeing, and we had a bad turn in the semiconductor market when I was at HP, an adulant, and I had to lay off 13, 14 people. I got death threats, because I spent money training these people, I spent $600,000, I was training each one of them, and had to lay them off within 12 calendar months. So, I think holding a position or chilling it till we know where at next year will put us in a better position going forward in the second year than just spending the money now, hiring people and having to lay them off. I just, it makes, I've been here before. And the thing with the school, I don't believe in closing schools. And the thing with the school, I don't believe in closing schools, and I believe in not supporting libraries, because if we get rid of those education opportunities and we get rid of the ability to learn, and a book, I'm sorry, I'm 54 years old, and I read a book, paper book, every day.
So do I.
So, why would I take that opportunity away from my seniors, away from the people in the city?
You're not.
Because it makes no sense. And so, I support the budget as it is. I think that giving Maple Lawn time to recover, to find money, to work with the school system, I think is a great idea. And, I'm sorry, they didn't elect us to be nice. They elected us to solve the problems of the city, and holding on positions for at least a year till we can get to a better spot economically, and it's our job as a council to figure out ways to raise revenue for the city, whether it be a tax, a fee, having a business come into the city, bring revenue in. We have to do that. Yes, it's going to be difficult, but I wear my big-boy pants every day when I run my business. So, it's time for us to step up and do that.
Yeah, I agree, and I don't think any of us like this budget. I, you know, we've all been upfront that we don't like the budget, but we really have no choice right now. And that's where we've got to stay in business and get it adopted, and then we start really aggressively looking at new revenue sources so we can be able to retain our level of service and sustain our services, because if we start eroding away our level of service, then that is eroding away our community's quality of life. So, and I don't think anybody in this room wants to see that, and I don't think most people in the City of Albany want to see that. So, we've got some serious work as a council to be able to really look at some new revenue sources that's going to be able to sustain our services, so. But, yeah, none of us really like this budget. We don't really have a choice right now. We need to get it adopted and start moving forward to bring in more revenue sources so we can prevent any more layoffs or any cutbacks, and try to be able to retain the positions that look like they're going to be frozen and be able to, to keep them full, so. Okay, any other comments on this budget? There's already a, a first and a second.
I'll vote for the, I'm going to vote for this under duress.
Okay, all right. Okay, and then is Bessie still on the line? Did she have any comments?
Bessie, do you have any comments?
Um, I would like to say one thing that I am not totally pleased with the budget right now, but I feel that we have to pass it so that we don't have any closures of the city, and we need to start working right away as to what we can do for raising funds, keeping our police force whole, and just go from there. But, right now, I think we are kind of under the gun where we have to pass it, but I do want us to start working right away.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I, I don't think we're under the gun, and I, I think there's other options, but let's go ahead and vote.
Well, one more thing. People in the City of Albany need to understand that with what we're doing with the police and fire, there's going to be longer response times. So, when something happens, don't expect the police and fire to be there right away, because it's going to, it's going to severely impact the police and fire's ability to do what you've received, the services you've received in the past. It's going to seriously affect it. So, that's, I'm under duress over this.
I want to add one more comment. So, people, I hope people don't believe that I am against police and fire. My mother was a retired policewoman, and so I totally respect the, the profession. I wanted to be a cop, and she told me, "No."
That's understandable.
But, but here's the deal. When my mother, when I laid my mother to rest, there was 300 police officers from Arizona, all over California at her funeral. I admire the work that they do, and I just don't want to put them in a position to bring in a brand-new officer, get him trained, and we have to lay him off next year. That's unfair to them, unfair to their families, unfair to the police department they serve with. So, let's be smart about this and do our damn jobs. And then next year, we'll have this problem, we'll hire those people back, and we'll figure it out before it.
Dick, did you have comments?
Well, I wanted to say also that our, I hate to see this, the reduced budget and the reductions in personnel that it requires. And I, I've had the, our fire department put out a fire in my garage. I've had the fire department haul me to the hospital when I fell off the roof and dislocated my shoulder. I certainly recognize the, the need for these services. And I also want to thank Ms. Harland for volunteering to help keep our Maple Lawn school going. And I see Maple Lawn as a facility that is fulfilling a need that doesn't seem to be fulfilled by the other preschools that we have in our city. And along those lines, a good friend of mine who retired from our school district a year and a half ago, she had the capability of tuning in with the kids who had problems. But she told me about other teachers that were just at their wits' end with the problems that they had with some of these kids. And I think a facility like Maple Lawn that can take kids that have problems and give them the help they need is a really necessary thing to have, and I'd like to see it get bigger rather than smaller myself. So, yeah, I'm going to vote for this budget, and wish we had more money so that we could do the more things that we'd like to do.
Okay, all right. All right. Any more comments? Okay, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Killam?
No.
Alex Johnson?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
It's four ayes.
Okay, all right. And it passed. Okay, thank you. Got our budget passed, so, thank you, folks. So, okay, next is business from the public, and this is a resolution relating to Senate Bill 770. Mr. Hiltz, would you like to come forward?
I'll stay on for a while, but I just may hang up after a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Where's she at?
Sue Folsky.
I have clients there.
Have her go and reduce it.
I know, I was like, oh, shit.
My name is Ray Hiltz. I live, H-I-L-T-S. I live at 2748 Ossicalaboue, Albany, 97322. I have a couple answers from two weeks ago. There were a couple questions that was asked, and one of them was, where does it stand at the legislature at the present time? Originally, back in February 12th, it was introduced in the first reading. Then on the 14th, it was referred to the health care, then to Ways and Means. And then on 4-1, a public hearing was held, then a work session on 4-3, another work session on 4-8. On 4-16, the recommendation was due pass with some amendments, and be referred to Ways and Means. And then, it was on the 16th, referred to Ways and Means, but now, in June 7th, it was assigned to a subcommittee on human services. Mr. Johnson, when I mentioned that my wife's and my expenses was $18,000, Mr. Johnson, I want to apologize, it was not $18,000, but it was $18,256.12. I checked with the accountant, but to give you some things, my, our medicine, which is, some of it's covered by insurance, others is not. Dental is not covered by insurance, and both of us needed dental work. My wife needed two pair of glasses. I needed one pair. Medicare premiums, the supplemental premiums. Before I had my back operation, I went to a chiropractor, which is not covered under any medical coverage. Long-term care, if you realize, for an 80 and an 82-year-old, the long-term care is expensive.
Oh, yeah.
I had to have rehab. I had three stents put in, so I had rehab for a while. Copays for doctor visits and emergency deductibles. As I mentioned, I had a back operation, I was four days in the hospital, which was not paid by insurance. So, that's where my $18,256.12 came from.
I know exactly why I did that, too.
So, anyway, to kind of go into a little more detail, I hope all of you went on the computer and looked at Senate Bill 770, because a couple of things that it does, and if you've ever heard a free bird, free bird over on Highway 34.
Yeah, 34, yeah.
The, he's in support of the single payer. But what the measure does, and we're asking you if you, to have a resolution supporting Measure 770, and it established the Universal Health Care Commission to recommend the design of the health care for all Oregon plans to provide high-quality, publicly-funded health care available to every individual residing in Oregon. Specifies membership of the commission, which is 18. Four of them will be legislative people, and the rest will be volunteers. All different aspects, from labor unions to doctors, to the health industry, all different aspects, which will be volunteers. It requires the commission to produce findings and recommendations for a well-functioning, universal health care system that is responsive to the needs and expectations of the residents of the state. It specifies values and principles a commission must consider in making recommendations. It requires the commission to provide an interim report to the Legislative Assembly no later than March 15th, 2020. Then it requires the commission to submit final findings and recommendations to the Legislative Assembly no later than February 1, 2021. And some of the issues that will be discussed will be the current connection between employment and health care coverage, broad aspects, broad impacts of access to health care coverage, and, as I mentioned, in 2013, the Oregon Health Authority contracted with a third party to examine four options for financing, financing health care delivery in the state. These options included single payer, a health care ingenuity plan, a public option in the health insurance marketplace, and status quo conducted by the RAN Corporation. That study found that of the four options, a single payer and health care ingenuity plan options offered the best potential to make substantial changes to insurance coverage and health care delivery. A little bit about a background, I looked up today, and I found that in the end of 2017, our population in Oregon was 4,108,008 people. The health insurance coverage currently represents a mix of public program, Medicare, which I'm on, Medicaid, TRICARE, employer-sponsored, and individual insurance options. According to the 2017 Oregon Health Insurance Survey, 93% of Oregonians had health insurance. Approximately 7% does not have health insurance. So, if you take 7% of 41, or 4 million, that's a lot of people that do not have health insurance. And also, some of the people may have health insurance, but they have high deductibles. One of the things for bankruptcy, health, or the cost of health not being able to pay for. To continue on, 40, 47.5% were covered through private group health insurance, 26% were covered through Medicaid, 15.1% were covered through Medicare, and 5.2% were covered through private individual insurance. Although state reforms in the Federal Affordable Care Act have reduced the number of uninsured individuals in Oregon, the coverage gaps that remain disproportionately affect minorities, low-income residents, and young adults. Individuals who have insurance company coverage through their employers or individual insurance market also experience continued increases in premiums and deductible. Mr. Olson had asked, uh, city manager last week, and he stated that last year, it was 25% of the payroll went to health insurance. This year, if I'm correct, I believe you mentioned, 33% went to health coverage. That's an 8% increase. As part of a group, health care for all of Oregon, we anticipate if the commission thinks will be, decide that instead of a 30, or 8% increase maybe each year, or 33% of payroll, we feel that'll be in the low teens. So, instead of paying that high premium, this is where some of your money can come from. The commission will not make a decision. All they do is what they're finding, they'll hold public hearings, and what they will find, they'll report back to the legislature. The legislature will make a decision. Yes, let's go with it? No, let's not go with it. So, that, and, so that's the reason why I'm asking for a resolution from you in supporting, going forward with the commission. Any questions?
Any questions, Ray? So, really, you know, it narrows down to, so the Senate Bill 770 is just for them to establish a commission to explore the issues related to implementing a single payer system. So, it's really no different than us as the city is forming a task force to look to see if a certain program would be feasible or not, so.
That is correct.
So, there's no, there's, the resolution is no direction of a decision being made, it's just exploring.
That's correct.
Exploring to see if it's feasible.
Questions, counsel?
Well, I, I would say that if we do send a resolution of this type, or this resolution itself, it'll indicate to the legislature that we are in favor of doing something about health care. And I think it's nationwide, I think it's ridiculous that we pay so much more for health care that is not anywhere near as satisfactory as other countries have, and it's mainly because we pay, pay too much for drugs, we pay too much for the business of insurance and that kind of stuff, so. I would move that we send this resolution to our legislature.
Okay, the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Then I'd like to thank Mr. Hiltz for bringing it to us.
I, I don't think the resolution would say that you're in favor of single payer, that you're in favor of authorizing the commission to go forward.
Yeah, take a look at it.
Well, it's in, a support of them establishing a commission.
Yes.
Yeah.
Establishing a commission.
So, there's no commission yet.
Well, it says at the bottom, Section 1, it says urges Oregon legislature to pass this bill. I, I'm, I don't mind having a research done. The best way to fix it is for the people that vote on it, and Congressman in the Senate, is to participate in our health care system. They have a totally different system. That's why they do the things they do. And so, and I understand why your costs are so high for your Medicare. I get it. I, I can't support this because I haven't read the actual legislation. I did find a lot of information about it. I'm an insurance guy, and I know what's, I know that some I'm an insurance guy, and I know what's, I know some of the problems with insurance. I would like to see more information about it. And also, has anybody talked to Senator Wyden, or Fazio, or any of our congressmen in the Senate about this?
They are in.
So there actually has been a motion to continue discussion on it. We do need a second.
Okay, as you know, they are in favor of a national, national, single payer.
Yes, hopefully, there's an election coming up in about a year and a half. Hopefully, people will be elected who will be in favor of this kind of thing and get that passed. Yes, indeed.
Mayor, there's a motion. I don't think there's a second.
Is there a second so we can continue discussion? Are you seconding for discussing?
I'm not.
I'm not either.
Was, okay, so.
That's out of order.
So, yeah, so Bud, so actually, there's, well, actually, was there more people that wanted to comment on this item besides Ray? Okay, all right, so hang on.
No, you have to come up here.
Yeah, so hang on, just, so, there was a motion. We're not, it doesn't look like we have counsel support.
There's no second.
Right, but I did not, I didn't ask for other comments to come forward. So I want to give folks the opportunity to speak, so, yes, Bud.
My apologies. I thought you had received a second. The point of order was in order. But I just wanted to clarify.
Bud, can you state your name and your last name for the record?
L.A.U.R.E.N.T., Glen County resident. I wanted to find out the goal of Mr. Olson's motion, because I heard sending it to your local representative, and I was going to suggest that more focus is on the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the Legislature.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we're having support, but we will see, so, yeah, Larry.
Point of order. Aren't we supposed to have a motion and a second? To ensure it could have anything continue for it.
Just, excuse me, before we started having a motion, we actually, I didn't get a chance to ask if there was more people that wanted to speak on this item.
But we're in the middle of it now.
Right, it is, but out of respect for folks sitting through our meeting, wanting to be able to speak, we need to give them the opportunity to speak on this item.
Are you objecting to hearing from the public?
No, I'm objecting to not following the procedure we normally follow.
So actually, the motion then was kind of more premature when we had, I had not asked for other comments, but, so, my error in not asking for other comments, but, yes, Larry.
My name is Lawrence Eby. It's spelled E-B-Y. I live at 2740 Foxglove Loop in Albany. I'm a retired surgeon. I didn't think I was going to speak tonight, so I didn't prepare a speech. But I have some thoughts. The health care delivery in this, when I was in early practice, was very simple. Applying for payment to an insurance company was very simple. I had one employee as a surgeon in my office, and she did all my nursing things and all my billing and everything. It's changed radically, become very complicated and very costly. Who is responsible? Everybody. Physicians, the health care industry, the insurance industry. We're all responsible for this. And we're going to stay responsible if we resist reasonable progress towards changing this and making it different than it is. And I can tell you that changing things helps in a lot of different ways. My son is a physician in Alaska. He's an administrator now. He doesn't see patients. He and his group have put together a health care system that put the client first. They call them, they call them, well, they're actually part, they actually are sort of owners of the corporation because it's the native system, and so everybody's part of the system, so they acknowledge that. But they started out building a system that put the client first. And so, that made a lot of changes. And guess what? It improved care hugely. It decreased cost, and some of you that are so interested in cost, it's actually more economical when you do things in a reasonable sort of a way and not the way we've always done it. And they've got, they've gotten awards, national awards repeated for the quality of care and their innovative system. And it's all around the structure of a single payer. It makes possible change. It makes possible change in terms of quality of care and outcome and all, and access and all that. Actually, we have a model going in this state right now in the Accordant of Care organizations. And those are doing, on the Medicaid level, the same sort of thing. They're increasing access, they're increasing quality, they're making it more reasonable economically. Now, why would we not want to go forward in looking at a very safe proposal of just having a commission to look at it? What is threatening about that? Because we, together, if we cooperate. Now, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
You supplement insurance? If we have Medicare for All, you might have more clients because there'd be more people who need supplemental insurance. I bet you could get another job if your insurance business went.
I'll be fine, thank you.
Yeah, I think you'd be fine.
I'll be, we'll be fine.
Some people are worried about the insurance industry, you know, it's going to be a lot of people unemployed. Well, why so? Let's build a different structure and give them a job in a different sort of way. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Larry, thank you. So, yes, yeah, yeah, Eby.
My name is Eda Horner, O-R-N-E-R, 1254 54th Avenue Southeast, Albany. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. We are not asking you to support single payer. We are asking you to support an effort at the state level to investigate what a program would look like that provided universal health care for every resident of Oregon. Now, we spent a lot of time on budgetary issues, and this is related to that. So I feel that it's reasonable that you would be willing to support an effort to examine something that impacts the city budget.
Okay, all right, thank you, Eda, and yes.
I'm Nadine Sandbo with at 222 Third Avenue Southeast.
What's your name? What is your name?
Nadine Sandbo.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so first I would just like to bring up that Jennifer Lee has, does support Medicare for All, and I would like to quickly read what she has about it. "Health care should be a right for every single American, not a privilege reserved for the healthy and the wealthy. Right now, our health care system is incredibly complex, fragmented, and stressful. Americans could have so much more peace of mind if we had a simple, seamless system where solely by virtue of living in America, you know that you will get the care you need. We've made tremendous strides in expanding access to health care across our nation, but many Americans still are rightfully frustrated by the cost and complexity of our current system. It's time to simplify health care and lower patients' costs and embrace Medicare for All." We're not asking you to, we just, we need a resolution to go through so that we will start looking at different options. What we have right now is not working. There's something that was brought up. I have a unique perspective. I help people in poverty with no resource try to find employment and leave poverty. On a weekly basis, I see people that cannot leave because they need medication, and they have to stay on OHP and work less. Because if they leave, they won't get their medications and they'll die. I'm a type one diabetic. If I don't have a certain type of health care, I will start losing my eyes and my feet. I'm a single mom. Even if I wasn't, by disabling me and not getting my medications, you're holding us in poverty and you're holding my daughter in poverty, just because of the medication. So tonight, we're asking you to please start looking at a different way to do things. It's not working. Hasn't been working for a very long time. And this isn't just an older person problem. I hear that all the time. I am dealing with, everyone that I work with is under the age of forty-nine, and they cannot leave poverty because of this problem. So as you talk about your budget and saving money, this is definitely something you need to start considering. Once someone's disabled, they can't afford, you had housing up here tonight, right? You had education for little ones. This is part of that funding problem, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nadine.
Sorry, I am Suzanne, S-U-Z-N-E, Van Orman, capital B-A-N, capital O-R-M-A-N. I reside at 4762 Becker Circle Southeast in Albany. I am a new resident, having lived in Hood River and Oregon City, and I'm having deja vu as I listen to you. And I have the distinction of being campaign manager for the Tri-City Service District for a lawn major because DEQ shut Oregon City down because they were having storm water in the same drainage as.
Sewer.
Sewer. And I can tell you that shut Oregon City down for ten years. I also have been the experience of Hood River shutting down their library, and I've been a member of the new service district for the library. So I also had the experience of being in the legislature in 2009, when it was a meltdown everywhere. So I've been a Head Start director in a Hood River area for twenty-two years, and I'm here to talk about children. I understand what it's like to be a senior and worry that you're going to, you're going to live longer than your money, or you're going to have a health catastrophe that will damage you. But it is very important for children. I was a Head Start director, had Head Start early, Head Start, Washington State Early Childhood, and Oregon Pre-Kinergarden in two counties in the state of Washington, and three counties in Oregon, Hood River, Wasco, and Jefferson. And the most important tenet of the Head Start program is health care, and getting every child examined and given a medical home so that these children have care. We were also lucky to get a grant with UCLA, and we did a study on training parents how to use a resource book to cut down on the use of the emergency room. And it was very successful, and UCLA did the statistics on it. So I just want you to, when you think about health care, it's not just about us who have gray hair. And I can assure you that there are things sometimes that gray hair gives you a disadvantage. But it's about children, and small children especially are very vulnerable. Babies, four-year-olds, any young parent will tell you. And then, if you were, having worked in Head Start where you have the lowest of the low in income, it's not just health care for them, but it's health care for those parents who don't have any. So when you think about health care, just don't forget, it's just not about us. It's about the children. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Suzanne. Anyone else that wanted to comment on this? Yes, sir.
I'm Richard Stagganmore, 1647 23rd Avenue Southwest in Albany. I listened to everybody talking about the budget, and I was very favorable and impressed with the seriousness of taking fiscal responsibility. That's why I was surprised that we were second on this motion when it was pointed out that the percentage of the budget has gone up from twenty-five to thirty-three percent. That's not a three percent increase. That's about a thirty percent increase. So please take that on mind, keep that on mind first. Secondly, here in the United States, we're paying upwards of fifty percent more for our health care than in other countries. So regardless of what you don't know about how these systems work, it's clear that they're far cheaper. So if you take your fiscal responsibility seriously, I would encourage you to let people who do take the time to look into this figure out what the best way would be to give us the kind of health care at the cost of people in every other developed country and Europe.
All right, thank you. I did see Dr. Mike Huntington did come up earlier and said hello to me because I hadn't seen him for quite a few years. And I remember he was very active over, you know, moving towards kind of health care for all. And so I asked him what year it was that he started working on it. It was 2007. So I think about twelve years this conversation's been taking place, and it's still at the level of not really exploring to see if it's feasible or not. So I do hope our legislature will move forward on this and to be able to really know whether this is something viable or not for, you know, for providing health insurance for everyone, for everyone's health care, so. Okay, was there anyone else that wanted to speak on it? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Okay, that is it on this resolution then, unless counsel still wanted to change their mind on it.
I'll second it.
Oh, you'll second it?
I want to find out more.
Okay, all right, so there was a motion, and then there was a second. So any discussion on the motion?
I suppose we ought to refer to our city attorney if he finds any, anything that ought to be changed or whatever, let him weigh in on perhaps. That'd be part of our motion.
For, mean to come back?
Well, no, not to go, well.
To just.
There's small things.
I do think.
I can't see anything that I would complain about.
Right, and today is.
I'm not a legal.
Today is the twelfth, council in two weeks. The legislative session's going to be getting over with fairly shortly.
Yeah, so it ought to go, it ought to go now.
Well, I would like to see what it looks like. I mean, if they're going to actually do a really good job, a real job of actually developing a system that makes fiscal sense, that covers people of all age levels, races, creeds, and colors, backgrounds, whatever. I just think that, I've seen so many things go wrong, the drugs, the medications. I have pictures that is scared the hell out of you of the drugs that my clients receive. So if this is going to make them do their job, I'll support it. But if they're just going to go talk for two years and not do anything with it, then it's a waste of all our time. They have to be serious about it.
Yeah, they do, mhm. Bill?
I don't have a problem supporting it. I have a problem voting for it tonight other than to have you bring back a resolution that we can look at that you mentioned has been reviewed by staff.
Who wrote this resolution?
I'm Wilson.
Who wrote this? Is this staff resolution here?
So this is a resolution that, what we've done in the past is when there's resolutions brought to us, all you've done is like make a motion for supporting the resolution. And then from there, it's up to the group to take it forward to say that Albany, you know, Albany City Council supports this resolution. That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I say, yeah, that'd be appropriate.
So you made the motion then to support this resolution? And there's a second, but is there more discussion?
Yeah, that would be good.
And is Bessie still on the line or not?
Yep.
Yes.
Did you have any questions, Bessie?
No, what Alex said sounds good.
Uh-huh, yeah. Because it's, it's just the resolution is only encouraging the legislature to form a committee to explore, you know, for single payer.
I guess I'm a socialist.
But it doesn't bind us to any...
Can I read the motion?
What's that?
Can I read the motion to you, just so it's very clear?
Yes.
The motion is to support the resolution establishing a commission, and it has been seconded yet.
I think it would be to, the resolution supporting Senate Bill seven seventy.
Yeah.
Which lists in there to establish a commission to explore the issues related to implementing the single payer system in Oregon, including engaging the public in designing the method of financing such a system. So, I mean, it would be a lengthy commission, but it's something that they've been, you know, you know, debating this issue for years, let's get down to and get it figured out.
I think they tried that at the national level, it's called Obamacare, and it blew up. So anytime these folks wanted to start discussing my healthcare, I get a little nervous about it because I don't think they know what the hell they're doing. And it's been proven over and over again in the last few years, health cares keep rising, care costs keep rising because of Obamacare and all those others.
That's incorrect. Healthcare, healthcare keep rising because the people that make the laws don't participate in the same healthcare system.
Well, that's part of the problem. So we're gonna ask them to fix it?
No, we're not asking them to fix it, we're asking them to find out what, what would Burke best...
But they'll eventually try to fix it.
Well, this is a national problem, it's not just Oregon. We're saying this commission, at least give us some ideas of what it would look like.
Okay, all right, you ready to vote, council? Okay, so there's a motion and a second, and this is supporting resolution, Senate Bill seven seventy. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Yes, please.
Bolson?
Yes.
Sykes?
No.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
No.
Alex Johnson?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
It's three, three time.
Okay, and I will be glad to support this. I want to find out myself, so I will vote yes. And so motion passes.
I hope everybody can join, single payer healthcare all that kind of, be in and over.
I just think it's long overdue that they really need to get down and really find out whether this is gonna work or not. And we, we need to know in Oregon, so, yeah, and the whole nation. All right, thank you folks. Now, we're still under business from the public. Is there anyone here that had another item to bring forward, under business from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay. Counsel, we have just a few more items, or did you want to take a break?
I want to keep this rock and roll.
Keep it going?
Yeah, keep it going.
Okay, all right. Then you have an adoption of a consent calendar. This is items one, and then you also have on your third page is item two. There isn't any items needing to be pulled off or entertain a motion.
Move to adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I think I, I think I heard...
Mike moved to approve, I think, Bill, did you second?
Alex moved, Bill seconded. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So is Bessie still on or not?
Aye.
Okay, she did, okay. So that's six votes. Okay. Wasn't sure if you were there or not, Bessie, but thank you also, Bessie, for attending, so very helpful tonight. Next, we have a ward of bids, and the first of it is a riverfront wet weather lift station in Forsme. And this starts on page one forty-nine. And who wants to chat?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So we have three awards tonight, I'll just talk about them each at one time here. The three of them are all sewer projects. Each project came in under the engineer's estimate and is estimated to be under budget. As discussed in each of the memos, we are recommending award to the low bidders for the riverfront interceptor project, Pacific excavation, in the amount of seven million one hundred and seventy-three thousand seventy-five dollars. For the pipe bursting project, we're recommending award to K and R Plumbing, in the amount of one million seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And for the cure and place pipe project, we're recommending award to Iron Horse LLC, in the amount of three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, questions?
We approve all three.
Second.
On all, all three items?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And we got a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, thank you, that went fast. And you got that, Mary, for all three. Okay, next, business from the council. And Bessie, did you have anything?
No, it's about, it's a little after eleven here. Just got through watching the Mariners Twins game, so I'm good.
Oh, okay, and what's the weather like? Oh, what's the weather like there, Bessie?
It's about mid-sixties here, but we had real bad thunderstorms for the last week, so it's been interesting.
You've been in Oregon last week, too.
It was at least ninety-five today, or if not more, so...
Yeah, I asked Peter to cool it down before I came home.
Yeah, okay, well, you have a great vacation. Thank you for attending. Okay, Bill, anything?
Yeah, I'm disappointed that the budget passed. I thought that Peter did his job that we hired him to do, and identified a problem and had some solutions. I think that it's gonna come back to bite us. And I think we had some other options, but those weren't really available unless the motion failed, and it didn't, so. I respect the vote of the council, and that's fine, I can live with it. But like I said, I'm just disappointed.
Well, I mean, the whole budget was disappointing to see that. I mean, I've never seen it over a whole generation now of having to, you know, be faced with this amount of cuts. But that's why, say, we've got some serious business to move, to be working on, to see what we can do so we can be able to prevent any more cuts and try to be able to retain, you know, the level of service that we all need for our community. Anything else, Bill?
No, thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, Rich?
You folks have a copy of something that I shipped down to you, picture of downtown, talked with Parks and Rec. And they did talk with...
Ron Irish?
Ron Irish, about, yeah, it's okay. If you look at it, if you read it so you can read downtown traffic directions, you can see two-thirds of the page to the left at the top, it says drop off upside down. That is the entrance to the park.
Which park?
Montique. And what we have had a problem with in the past is, we would have people wanting to drop people off, and so they would drive down Washington to the park and then turn around with hundreds of people walking around them. And so devised a system that will go down Ferry Street, across water, and then out only, on Washington, up to First Avenue. So people will be able to drop people off in wheelchairs or whatever, real close. Or you can also go up on the left-hand corner. That left-hand corner is the other entrance to the park. If you drop people off there, you'll actually be closer than dropping them off at First and Washington, and it will keep the traffic away. There would be, oh, probably five or six signs pointing people the correct directions, so it should be better traffic though. And that is for upcoming river those. Anyway, that's, yeah.
Question, question.
First thing, second thing, unless there, you have a question?
Yeah, question on the map, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you look at the section of Ferry, between Water and First...
Yep.
Is it your intent that that would be a one-way street during this process?
I didn't make it that way, no. But that is the, that is the pathway, if you, if you're coming down Washington from Pacific and you stop at Second Avenue, it will point you to the right on Second, and then go to Ferry, it'll point you to the left. And then, that's just the pathway to go get to Water Street. That's, that's the reason that line and the arrows are on it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Second item, I was at Lynn County Public Safety Coordinating Council today, and there were some encouraging news about how well mental health and mobile mental health is working with the Albany Police Department. There were folks from mental health packing people from Albany on the back, and I was the only one there because Mario was busy, so. Kudos to the police department and to when one of those workers, one of the mental health mobile workers, got stuck in hospital, all of a sudden, there are a couple, three Albany police officers in there, all gowned up, and maybe, maybe somebody knows who those were. No, you know, look in the mirror, yeah. Pat on the back to, to the police department and the officers for going the extra mile. That's it.
Okay, all right. Alex, anything?
This weekend, I attended the fire department, Albany Passport, and it was fantastic, met a lot of people. And I walked in and they had this nice table display with T-shirts and jerseys and everything for the fire department, but no fire med forms. So I said, Sandy, where the fire med forms? And we actually, she actually sold memberships there that day. I don't know how much she sold, but I renewed my membership there, and it was nice because people saw me doing it, and what is that? Fire med. So I was selling fire med for the fire department. So I enjoyed that. The kids, I took a bunch of pictures and I forwarded them on to the city staff that requested them. And then I also attended Juneteenth Celebration in Corales, African-Americans celebrating the actual end of slavery in the United States. I'm sorry about that. It was actually after nineteen sixty, eighteen sixty-five versus eighteen sixty-three. So it was a nice celebration of coming together, all elected officials that were in attendance spoke a little bit. And it was just a good family celebration. And then today, what did I do today? Anyway, it was just a great week and it was hot, that's pretty much it, so.
It's been nice and cool in here this evening.
My hometown was a hundred and seven, so, we're good. Oh, I'm sorry, pickleball, this morning. I have never heard of the game before, I'm sorry I'm taking all this time. So it was fantastic. I didn't play because I'm, yeah, not happening. But it was nice to see the number of seniors and people out there playing pickleball. And so the president is gonna give me information so I can deliver it to all my clients that would be interested in getting out and doing something different. And so I was really encouraged to see that number of people out at eighty-five degree weather playing pickleball.
It's a, it's a fun game. So when they, when we did the grand opening of the courts, they had me come and I played and they were surprised that I could play, and it's like I was a former tennis player in my younger years. As long as you can play tennis, you can play pickleball. It's actually more easier, you don't have as much running around a court as, as tennis, but, yeah, it's a fun sport, so.
Was that with your bad shoulder?
Nope, no, this was before, I could not do it now, so, couldn't be able to toss that ball up now, but, yeah, so.
Okay, is that it? All right, Mike?
No.
Okay, and I didn't have anything. Peter, did you?
I just want to make a quick comment about Citizens Advisory Group members and the appointment process. So as you all know, we've made recent changes to appointment procedures, and staff have been clarifying procedures for sitting board and commission members, as well as any others who might be interested in serving. The city's Citizen Advisory Group's Member and Staff Manual provides relevant guidance, and we refer people to this resource. The roles and responsibilities of advisory group members haven't changed. Members are expected to exercise their sound judgment and the expertise that they bring to the table, and expected to observe city policies and code of conduct, adhere to ethical standards, and contribute to accomplishing the work of the committee. Members are also reminded that the purpose of committee meetings is to permit open discussion on specific topics in a setting that is more informal than a council meeting, and that's in quotes. And lastly, they're reminded that they're expected to be independent, but that they serve at the pleasure of their appointing counselor. So that's just some of the guidance, or some of the clarification that we've been giving to people who call and ask about it, okay?
Okay, all right, that's it. Staff have anything? Yep.
I just have a quick thing, Mayor. Peter brought up to your attention last Monday that Channel twenty-eight has been down. I just wanted to add a little bit more information to that. This is, the reason it's down is because there is a piece of equipment that serves as an interface between our tricaster where Michael is sitting and Channel twenty-eight that goes in one of the racks. That equipment was acquired by, by the city, it was transferred to the city from L B C C. And over there, that equipment was old already, so we have a very old piece of equipment. It has died in the past and we've been able to find parts for it. Now, apparently, the motherboard has failed and the equipment is, we just can't use it. Michael has done some high-level look at where we can find something like this, given that this is designed for standard definition TV, and that's what Channel twenty-eight would only accept. Most of us probably don't, most of people don't know what standard definition TV is, given that we have now high definition. But that's what Channel twenty-eight accepts. The cost seems to be between three, thirty-five hundred and up to ten or twelve thousand dollars to acquire that piece of equipment. Now, as you see today, we are able to record the meetings and still submit them through YouTube, so that service is still available. The only service that is not available is sending it to Channel twenty-eight right now. So I just want to know if the council is interested in us looking for, trying to find that piece of equipment, which is between three, you know, it could be between thirty-five hundred and ten thousand dollars to be able to send it to Channel twenty-eight.
I would be in favor of it, especially if we're going to use outreach, more electronic teams, terms for outreach, Channel twenty-eight, Channel twenty-two, or twenty-three, whatever.
I hear from a lot of people that do watch it, so...
Me too.
I mean, I hate to spend ten thousand, but maybe if he can really find it for thirty-five hundred would be, to me, a lot more acceptable, but, you know.
Yeah, there's...
We've had many years out of this system, I mean, we've...
The only, the only...
I'm thinking fifteen years we've had it, Mayor.
Well, L B C C.
We had it, we had it in two thousand and eleven, from L B C C.
So it's long since...
But we, we acquired it from them, but they did it for us before.
They had a lot.
How long have they been videotaped? Remember, we used to send it to L B C C and then they did it.
That was, I don't remember, two thousand and seven possibly?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time.
They had it for many years before. The only issue or concern that we might have is that by getting a piece of equipment, we may need like a switch to be able to transmit both to YouTube and to Channel twenty-eight. And Michael was mentioning to me, maybe that's what he's out, is that there might, might generate a delay up to, what was the number, Michael?
About twenty minutes, a minute and a half.
So if somebody's trying to look at, watch the meetings live, it's gonna be a potential delay between a minute, a minute and a half, because the equipment that we had was called the Nexus Ultra, and it was, it was able to transmit both. The equipment that we're finding is just a version older than what we had, and you need a piece of equipment to actually switch, you know, just transmit information in two different directions. So that might cause a delay, is that what you were mentioning?
Correct. The piece of equipment for thirty-five hundred is used, it's older than the one that just failed, it is not repairable if it fails, it only has a thirty-day warranty. There's nothing else anywhere on the web.
Go get the good stuff.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're gonna...
If you go new, it's standard definition into high definition, re-encoded into standard definition through a splitter, so your delay is gonna be between one and two minutes depending on, on the internet.
Wow.
Which means watching a meeting live, trying to participate if you're following.
Right now, through YouTube is probably five seconds, the way we're doing it today.
Connected direct tonight, we were live on YouTube, five-second delay.
So, so maybe explore some more and see what it's actually gonna end up costing and come back to the council.
Maybe we can look into numbers of who views by YouTube and who views by old-fashioned and by broadcast TV.
Yeah.
Yeah, by YouTube, we have the, we can look them up, it's available right now, anybody can see them, how many people can use them. By TV, it's been a little bit harder, and I think what we did in the past was, we put a message, if you're seeing this, if you're seeing this broadcast, please give us a call so we can count how many people. And I think it was a few people, but one of them was John Ratner, he's a faithful, faithful viewer of Channel twenty-eight.
I know there's a lot of seniors, because they don't get on the computer, but I hear from seniors...
from seniors that like to watch the video.
Seniors are the ones who are on the computer all the time. Got a computer, haven't heard from them in eight months.
I've heard from five viewers who watch it.
Yeah.
Five.